Good afternoon, or afternoon, may I say. I'd like to call the special called meeting of the Milton City Council for Friday, August 26, 2016 to order. The city clerk, please call roll and make general announcements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 26, 2016 special called meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's, today's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt is absent. Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morrig is also absent. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sorry, not Suzy, but Stacy, if you could please call the agenda item.
The first item is approval of meeting agenda.
Okay. This meeting is called to have an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Is there any other staff have anything on that, council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. For the record, Councilmember Morrig is here. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone, stating your name and address for the record. And you will have five minutes for remarks. Okay. I'll call Stacy, if you've got some public comment.
I have one public comment card.
Christine, Christine may have some more.
First public comment card I have is from Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 15625 Canterbury Chase. Good afternoon. As you know, there is an issue with the subdivision of a property at the corner of Wood Road and Birmingham Highway. The Milton Coalition stands in solidarity with the residents of Wood Road in opposing the plating of this property. Once again, our city has made a decision to degrade our rural character. I know you have gotten letters from citizens on this matter, so I will not get into the many reasons why this plating should be reversed. However, I want to briefly address the broader issue of zoning in Milton. Issues with our zoning process, including a lack of transparency, got me initially involved in city government 10 months ago. The emails I received in October showed a corrupted, unfair, non-transparent, and developer-friendly process. My experience since then has only further convinced me of the need for radical reform of our land use processes. So far, council's response has been denial, defensiveness, and dawdling. I've heard council rationalize that we are following state law, which we all know favors developers and sets only bare minimums. And I've heard we think we are better than other nearby communities, like Alpharetta. My response is, so what? I urge council to acknowledge the serious issues that exist with our zoning processes. I urge council to conduct a thorough, top-down review of our zoning processes, one that provides ample opportunity for citizen input. The alternative is further reckless and ridiculous zoning decisions that will only serve to further degrade our rural character. Thank you for considering my perspectives.
Thank you. Stacy, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next public comment card, you have to forgive me, I cannot read the last name, but the first name is Elise.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I actually was hoping to follow some of the more equipped people to speak on this topic, meaning people who have reviewed.
Would you mind, sorry, just before you speak, would you mind just saying your name and address for the record?
Sure, yeah, I'm Elise Kua. I live at 14745 Wood Road in Milton. And I'm sure most of you have heard from emails from me as well as my neighbors on Wood Road, but we're all just deeply disturbed by this sort of sprung upon us concept that we're going to divide this small strip of land into two parcels, each of about one acre. And I was under the impression, and I believe it's supported by code, and I'm sure that there are people who will be speaking to that, there are far more versed on the topic, but that the code is that when you are on a gravel road or adjacent to a gravel road, that the minimum is three acres. So this is where sort of the conflict comes in, that we just feel that this is not, this is not on a paved road. The Wood Road is in its entirety considered to be a gravel road. It's part of the Milton Trail system. We thought that this was the vision of the city as well, and then it was concordance with the residents on the road and just the local sort of community. So I think that I don't need to go into all the details. I'm opposed to it. I hope that you will consider our, not just ours, but the community at large. I see this road being used by people all the time. Many, many people don't live on the road, and I don't think that putting a high density, you know, meaning one acre subdivision there is beneficial to the scope of Milton overall. So thank you for hearing my opinion.
Thank you. Stacy, if you'd please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Brooke Hunter, I believe that's what it says.
Yes, my name is Brooke Hunter, live at 14680 Wood Road. With five minutes, I'm going to go to the conclusion first, so that you, and then, because I know you've all received my letter about how this took place years and years ago, before there was even a Milton, when we were working probably just with Karen with Fulton County. First of all, there, what has we learned before with the school that was trying to happen on Birmingham, I mean on Freemanville, that the only way we were ever going to get a voice, transparency, or be heard was through the law? We would really like to not have to put out any funds for the city or for ourselves when there is a wonderful chance of this area becoming a park at the end of the trail. We would like you to really consider that. That's my conclusion. It's suddenly heard that somebody had already come up with that idea. My conclusion is, I think that probably makes more sense, because we're not going to be able to destroy the road like we probably should have had Bob Fulton do. We had that option that day when we stopped. It's being paved illegally, was not permitted, it was not standardized, it was not surveyed. There was no reason for it, except for a neighbor who went to the asphalt truck and said, will you please put more in front of this house? My wife is ill because of the dust, and that's why there was put some asphalt there. When we stopped and saw what was happening, Bob Fulton came immediately from Fulton County. He tried to make us all happy with the fact that it suddenly was, had this asphalt strip. We thought, well, it's not going to ever cause any damage. Who would know that in these years that have passed, that it would come back and we'd be standing before you, trying to explain that that is not a permitted standardized road, that it was done just because of a neighbor begging the asphalt driver to put asphalt in front. I therefore would like to give time to those that have done more research, because we've been out of town, we only heard about the meeting an hour ago. If I hadn't heard from Diane Maloney, we wouldn't have been here. Will you please consider the idea that we don't want to have to go to law for the only way to get a voice and transparency? We would like you to very well consider that you don't want to have to do the same thing and pay the money that would entail with some kind of a court case, that this is the perfect ending of the Milton Trail, to have it suddenly become a park, if we can find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
The next public comment card is from Diane Maloney.
Hey, Diane Maloney, 14430 Wood Road and 14420 Wood Road. Mayor Lockwood, council members, I was hoping Mr. Gerard would be here, and city staff. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. It's sad that a special session had to be called to deal with what seems to be an honest mistake by staff. Somehow someone at the City of Milton approved without law or authority to do so, one acre lots on Wood Road. I and many others would argue that the city approved the division of the two and a half acre parcel into two lots based on the plat that clearly reads pavement, labeled across the front of these two lots. A licensed land surveyor likely doesn't have the expertise or knowledge of what constitutes a legal paved road. Pavement does not equal a paved road. Just like when my children were little and they called their very small pond in the back of our property a lake, it wasn't a lake. Mistakes happen, we're all human, but what matters to me is what we do when we make a mistake. The city needs to make it right for all the landowners on Wood Road and for all the residents of Milton. The purpose of the asphalt was put down at the intersection of Wood and Birmingham for safety and dust abatement. It was never intended to be a road. There was no survey done by Fulton County prior to the installation, no road lines were ever painted on this asphalt. It varies widely in its width, from 13 feet 6 inches to 17 feet 4 inches, which is well short of the 24-foot standard. A few county workers showed up with a load of asphalt and laid it down without much regard. It certainly didn't meet any road standards back then for Fulton County and doesn't come close to meeting any now for Fulton County or the City of Milton. Let's see. The speed limit on Wood Road is only 15 miles per hour, less than any paved road, because it's gravel and part of the Milton Trail system. The City of Milton maps clearly label Wood Road as gravel from the beginning of it at Birmingham Highway, all the way to the other end at Phillips Circle to Freemanville Road. I would also like to point out that in Lot 2 of the plat, that there's an error. A 50-foot rear setback is required, and there's no justification for a 25-foot side setback as is shown parallel to Wood. It seems to me that there could be legal action from the landowners when they learn of the city's error, or there could be legal action from the residents. When you look at these facts and the obvious misinterpretation by city staff of a very clear ordinance and the very logical conclusion that the very small section of Wood Road, it is not paved, it seems that the City of Milton is not in a good position. I'm praying that when you all sit down to discuss this in a few minutes, that you can come up with a solution that will first uphold the law and ordinances and be a reasonable and win-win solution for all involved. And if I have any time left, I have another neighbor that wanted me to read their comments. It's very short. Are you all okay with that?
We have two more minutes left.
This is from Scott and Allison Lewis in there at 15535 Wood Road. Dear Milton City Council, we stand with our neighbors in being against the inappropriate and possibly unlawful rezoning of the section of Wood Road and Birmingham Highway for one acre lot approval. As Wood Road has been designated as a Milton Trail, how does this rezoning fit the marketing profile of Milton for saving our rural areas? In addition, the cited paved road is in no way an approved paved road built to code, therefore totally disallowing the approval of one acre zoning. Indeed, as I am sure others will outline in detail, the paved portion of that road was an afterthought and not meant to designate Wood Road as a paved road, hence the Milton Trail designation. We ask that one acre zoning approval be reversed immediately. Warm regard, Scott and Allison Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, we are in motion.
Last, yes, we have one more. It's from David Shaw.
Hi, I'm David Shaw. I live at 14600 Wood Road, and I oppose, and I also concur with the Hunters, that this would be an excellent park of Wood Road to be a park. And I've been reading through all the documentation, and I feel saddened that I have to speak against James Anthony Smith for wanting to build a home on that one acre. In 1995, I went through the process of subdividing a piece of property from Mr. and Mrs. Hunter, and went through a similar process where I had to appear before Fulton County at the time to get a permit to build on 6.7 acres that was on floodplain because it borders Chicken Creek. That was 6.7 acres on a gravel road, and I remember that portion of the road because in Snow Jam 2000, I slid down the hill onto Birmingham Highway on that road. And therefore, they decided it was more prudent, Fulton County at the time, to put a piece of asphalt at the top of the hill. And then unbeknownst to a lot of people that lived on that road, suddenly that was stretched much further down the road. It was never intended to be that way. I think it would be a travesty to build a home on one acre, bordering against that walking trail adjacent to Birmingham Highway and a school. It just doesn't seem like it's a prudent use of land. And I don't know who the owner of the land that sold it, and I see that Rodney Reese did the surveying, he did my surveying, but I don't think that was ever intended to be a buildable lot on that road. So I hope you listened to all the residents' arguments. We have nothing against James Anthony Smith, but that'd be a horrible place to try to put a home, I believe. So thanks.
Thank you. Is that all the public comment we have, Suzy?
That's it.
Okay. I would open up for a motion that we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and possible litigation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Let's move into executive session.
All right, do I have a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene, second.
I got a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's one, two, three, four. Four in favor of that. Motion, we adjourn.
Motion, adjourn, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.